This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. This meeting is being shown on Whitman Hansen Cable Access Television. It's being recorded and it'll be available to view in the future at WHCA.tv/Watch. The meeting is being held virtually in accordance with Governor Baker's orders during COVID-19. There'll be no public participation this evening. We have done a preliminary roll call prior to the start of this meeting. When we move into the meeting, the votes will be done by roll call so that there will be clarity on the votes, as will all comments and discussions. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Bloss, take it away for me, please.
Announcements. Fiscal year 21, real estate and personal property bills have been mailed and are due on August 3rd, 2020 for the first quarter, and November 2nd, 2020 for the second quarter. If anyone has not received a bill, please call the Treasury Collector's Office at 781-293-2422. Three at-large members are needed for the newly constituted Re- D- Regionalization Feasibility Committee. If you are interested in submitting a volunteer application for consideration by the selectmen, please download the form on the town website, www.hansen-ma.gov. All applications must be sent to G. Getzen, that's G-G-E-T-Z-E-N, at Hanson-MA.gov by August 10th. Volunteers are also needed on the following committees: Facebook upkeep committee, 200th anniversary, Conservation Commission Associate Member, Cultural Council, Disabilities, Economic Development, Finance, Highway Building Committee, Historical Commission, Memorial Day Patriotic Observance, Memorial Field Trustees, North River Commission, and Zoning Board alternate. Applications for appointment and info on the committee are available on the town website, Upcoming meetings: Tuesday, July 21st, Board of Selectmen; Wednesday, July 29th and possibly 30th, annual and special town meetings; Tuesday, August 11th, Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, first, under new business, junk dealers license renewal. So it looks like we have two. So the first one is DMV Industries, 1282 Main Street. So this looks like a normal renewal. Tracy White. So John, this is, this is just a normal renewal? They're just renewing for one year?
Yeah, this is just a one-year renewal, both of these. These are, they expired on June 30th.
Okay, and no issues that you know of of either one of them?
She said no, and we're gonna check, just double-check to make sure that, that all taxes have been paid by, that they, that they have been. So Gria did look into it, and they have been paid, so thank you.
Okay, Laura, is that you?
It is me, and is there any, there's no building inspector or building code violation, you know, not that, you know, the building itself could have a violation, but we have occasionally that some of the dealers go in excess of the license.
Laura, we're only catching part of that.
I'm just asking, was there any issues with Bob Curran? Did Bob Curran say there were any issues?
Mrs. Danbrook?
Agreed to not check it with Bob Curran, but this is, this is junk stuff. This, I don't think this is junk cars. This is just junk.
Oh, just junk, okay, but we haven't had any Board of Health violations or any building code violations or anything of that sort?
The health agent, Mr. Amato, is in the room with me here, and he just told me that there have been no issues with either of them.
Okay, I mean typically, the Board, our Board has always historically checked on taxes, health issues, and then building code violations or any license violations.
Yeah, Gria checked on the taxes, Laura, and she said they're up, both of them are up to date, both the bodies.
Okay, I mean, I, we could move it just pending Bob, you know, verifying that there were no issues.
I'm fine with that. So I'm looking for a motion to approve, to extend the license for DMV Industries, 1282 Main Street, and until June 30th, did you say, John, 2021? I don't have the date in front of me.
Yeah, that, yes, that's, it's a one-year renewal.
Okay, just subject to confirming with the building inspector, Bob Curran, that there's no issues?
Some of.
Second. Okay, the motion's made and seconded by Mr. Dyer. Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mrs. Kement?
Aye.
Mr. Bloss?
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Okay, the next one is, let me just pull this one back. The next one, the next dealer is F.B.C.H. thrift store, 214 Main Street. And we're assuming the same thing, so we can move this one with the same condition, double-checking the status with building inspector, make sure there's no violations or anything.
Some of this lies, Gria can confirm no issue with taxes. None.
Gria says there's no, no issues on taxes on that one either.
Is this the First Baptist Church?
Yes, it's the First Baptist Church thrift, thrift shop.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Hickey. Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mrs. Kement?
Aye.
Mr. Bloss?
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Okay. Next, under appointments, we have Conservation Committee Associate Member, Thomas Rafferty. I apologize if I hacked his name, Jr., 225 County Road. So John, this is just an associate member? Is he taking the place of somebody, or?
I'm gonna turn it over to Gria here, so go ahead.
There were two vacancies. Now, if you go to appoint this gentleman this evening, we're down to one. And it is a non-voting member, and Concom plans to invite him to their next meeting.
Okay, now, do you know if he reached out to the selectmen's office at all, Gria?
He did. He, he spoke with me, and he also, I believe, communicated with Concom. There was a question of who the appointing authority was, and it is, in fact, the Board of Selectmen. Even though it's a non-voting position, it is not Concom, so that will be conveyed to them.
Right, okay, I agree with that. Does anyone have any questions? Not seeing any questions. I am looking for a motion to appoint Conservation Number, Associate Member, Thomas Rafferty, 225 County Road. I'm not sure of the term. I don't have that. I'm not sure how long we're appointing him for.
It would be a one-year appointment.
Okay.
Some of.
Second by Matt.
June 30th, 2021. Moved by Mr. Bloss, seconded by Matt. Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mrs. Kement?
Aye.
Mr. Bloss?
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Okay, old business. Boy, this is a new topic. Discuss the reopening of Camp Quaney in Cranberry Cove and movie night at McQuan School. So the, the movie night will hold off for a second. So Diane, you're here with us still, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay, well, thank you for coming. So Diane, I mentioned this briefly at the end of our meeting last week. So on July 3rd, I believe, Diane, myself, and also the health agent, Mr. Amato, we all met down at Camp Quaney, because I still had questions about the plan that Diane had submitted. So in my opinion, Diane overcame, you know, the, my, the stuff that I was concerned about. So, you know, she showed us, she showed us the plan, she showed us the social distancing, how many people they could have there. So I was very satisfied. We spent over an hour. And, and I'll also turn it over to Mr. Amato. I believe Mr. Amato was satisfied. The only thing that, when we left there, so I was satisfied as far as the camp pot. The only thing that we just, there was a couple of things that, that the health agent had suggested that we do for the camp, to open the camp. So, you know, so we're gonna be looking, when we're done with the discussion, to open up Cranberry Cove and also Camp Quaney. So John had mentioned to me earlier that Diane had changed the plan. I spoke to Diane, and what Diane did was just tweak the plan to the concerns that me and Mr. Amato had. One of the things that I suggested was that we just open it up to Hanson residents. And then there was something else, Diane, that I think that Mr. Amato had suggested that day we were out there, if you want to jump in.
Yeah, the other suggestion was the money piece, so that money wasn't changing hands, that everything go through Unipay, and we can sell season passes with a disclaimer that says, should the beach close, there really are not going to be any refunds, or they can have the $5 per day. And the other thing was, he wanted to make sure that, correct me if I'm wrong, Gil, to make sure that we had proper cleaning supplies and that we would use the right things. And he told us that we have access to a fogger through the police or fire department should we need to do a thorough deep clean, should someone test positive for COVID. And again, included in the plan was a separate entrance and a separate exit, and you would be escorted out of the exit. I don't want to just leave the exit open because people can just kind of slide in even when they're, when you're not looking. And the last thing was that there will be two shifts, a 10 to 2 and a 2 to 6. So we will have to, should there be many people that want to use the Cove, you, it'll be first come, first served, but at 2 o'clock, we will clear the beach. And if there is a line waiting for people to come in, then they will come in, the new people, from 2 to 6, if they would like. And if there's no line, you know, then people can stay if they want. But we are going to clear the beach even if one person's waiting, so that people can all, can have as much access as possible, that we can let as much people have it as possible.
Now Diane, how are you gonna be as far as lifeguards? Are you gonna be okay with the proper lifeguards that you need over there?
Well, again, this is all pending good test results of the water by the health department and being able to properly staff. And again, we will be using, hopefully, adults as gatekeepers, I'm pretty sure, because we're gonna use some of our caretakers, and Mr. Boyle was looking into their job descriptions. And I think there is a line in there that says, and any other assignments should the, that the commission gives you, so they can act as gatekeepers even though they are caretakers. And, and lifeguards, I've spoken, we would definitely have a beach director. And I think we would have enough lifeguards to pull it out for the remainder of this season. One lifeguard needs to recertify, but we do have someone that's willing to, qualified and willing to recertify that person.
Okay, the other thing that we had spoke about was keeping track of the people that are coming to the Cove?
Yep, there'll be a log, that's in the plan. There will be a log. Everybody signs in with their name, their address, their phone number, how many are in your party, everybody's name, address, and all that, and we'll just take it every day. I mean, you know, we'll just have notebooks for each day.
Okay, all right, now let's talk about Camp Quaney. We read over there and on the stuff that we discussed?
Yes, we spoke with the health agent, and if people do want to camp, again, it'll be Hanson residents only. If they're renting cabins, they cannot rent cabins right next to each other. The cabins, we're gonna do every other, or even every two, depending on how many people want it. All grills and picnic tables, picnic tables will not be available. All grills will be covered because they are communal sort of, you know, item at the camp. So they'll be covered, and they will have to buy a pass to the Cove if they want to use it and get in line with everybody.
Okay.
And then, of course, clinging will happen in accordance with state guidelines.
Okay. Mr. Amato? Are you happy with everything that you've seen as far as the plan and the meeting that we saw over there and, and everything to do with Needle Lodge over the past week, the stuff you've been talking to Diane and dealing with?
Yeah, I'm pretty satisfied. I think we've, we've met quite a bit, and we've opened a tremendous line of communication between all of us, and I think that's working out very well. And as soon as something new comes in, I try to get it to them as soon as possible. We met last week again, and, you know, I'm pretty satisfied as long as, you know, we have to adhere to the guidelines, and it takes, you know, control. So I think, you know, her plan now and the plan for the camp, I think it'll be, you know, it'll be successful. Most main thing is control and keeping track of things, so.
Right.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for either Diane or Mr. Amato? So, you know, oh, I'm sorry, does somebody? Mr. Dyer, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question, a couple of questions for you, if that's all right. To Diane, with us restricting it to Hanson resident-only customers, do we have any data on what percentage is Hanson residents versus other visitors?
Versus, I don't have that data with me right now versus Pembroke. I know people from Pembroke and Whitman do typically use the Cove and day passes, people from everywhere have been there in the past. But Mr. Amato felt, go ahead, Gil, sorry.
I think we kind of left this, right? As the camp goes, we've kind of left that open because you have different venues that'll take place at the camp, so they might involve people from different towns, so as far as the camp goes. As far as the camp goes, I think we're leaving that open because you'll have different venues. You, you open the classes now, different things that can be held at the camp. So I think you want to, as far as Hanson residents, can leave that open, but the Cove definitely separate, Hanson residents.
I thought you said, I, Matt, I thought you were talking just about Hanson residents. Sorry, I'm hearing a lot of noise. I apologize. It's throwing me off. Matt, will you speak strictly about the Cove?
Another question?
Yeah, I was just talking about the Cove, because, I mean, I know there's concerns about opening up the Cove and the revenue that will bring in, and I'm afraid if we close it only to Hanson residents and we have the, you know, that kind of staffing that you were, you were talking about, three gatekeepers, three lifeguards at one point, I'm afraid that it's gonna really impact the financial bottom line of just closing it to Hanson residents only.
Okay, well, we're talking about two gatekeepers and two lifeguards because of the, of, we have to minimize space on the beach anyway. So, because of the social distancing. So at any one time, I don't anticipate there being, you know, at one specific time, 50 to 75, even 100 people in the water that would qualify for three lifeguards. But regardless of what we do with the beach, as you've said in the past, Matt, the beach, it was sort of a, hopefully break even, but usually loses a little money because it's a service that we provide. You have always told us that. So it's not gonna be any different this year. I'm hope, I, I don't know what's gonna happen with our budget, with possible cuts, because the town is facing so much. I'm sorry, my computer just did something funky. Okay. There's nothing I can do to address that. If you want to open the Cove, we gotta pay people.
No, no, absolutely. I don't disagree that, you know, we're gonna make money on this or anything like that this year. I just wanted to make sure that we maximize our profits or income as where we can. And I'm just afraid of just closing out a whole half of a population that might impact that.
Okay, we also have, we will get reimbursed possibly. I did speak with Mr. Cutler this week. We could possibly get reimbursed for some of the staffing if we don't typically use that kind of staffing, but we are because of COVID. He's not sure. It's more for things like the hand sanitizer that we will be needing, the extra cleaning supplies that we will be needing, any personal protective equipment that we will be needing. All of those things will be getting reimbursed by the CARES Act, and so that should help us some.
Great, thank you.
So, anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Wes does. Hi Diane, you, you, you keep working. I know you're working hard. I actually have no qualms with the camp. I think, I, I'm just guessing that the camp can pull itself off. But I still believe that there is no chance with the Cove. As I said last week, realistically, because I'm a teacher as much as anything, our obligation right now in the state of Massachusetts, every adult has to be working toward the kids in school in September. And the Cove, I'm laughing, it's like the Cove is a skinny H and a skinny I and a skinny bit of shoreline on which little kids play right at the water's edge with sand. The rest of the beach doesn't matter. We can go as deep as we want back into the woods. The Cove is the H dock, the I dock, and that shoreline. And to, for me, to imagine, I, I'm just, I can just see, we have kids lined up at six-foot intervals on the dock. And now Joey jumps off the end of the dock. Now everyone moves forward six feet. Now Julia jumps off the dock. Now everyone moves forward six feet. Now Eric jumps off the dock. Two days, and Ju, Joey, Julia, and Eric will say, no, that was no fun. I'm not going there anymore. But we'll still have two caretakers, we'll still have two lifeguards, as one of them a beach director, I'm guessing. It's like, very quickly, we all know that August dries up anyway. August becomes very quiet. As soon as the kids realize that they are not interacting, that they're not social distancing, that the docks are, the docks are simply not feasible. So it doesn't matter to me what the beach is. We, we have to protect our kids. Every adult has been saying right now, September, my kid's in school. That is so much more important than whether they can spend two days or three days at the beach. So I think we've got to protect the kids. We've got to make sure that that is, the entire state's first obligation. We're watching what's happening. LA and San Diego aren't going back to school. Florida, you can bet, is not going back to school. Most of the country is in this horror show, and all it takes is one family to say, we're vacationing out of state, now we're coming back. Now we'll go to the Cove, we'll be asymptomatic. And suddenly you've got a super spreader event on your hand, and Hanson is on, is virtually online come September. I just feel so strongly about this. It's like we are, we are playing, putting such an enormous risk on our schools, and it will kill me, of course, if, because Whitman closed, they're pulled out for the summer. That Whitman in September, suddenly those, they have no COVID issues in town. Their kids aren't, their kids aren't symptomatic like Hanson's are, because we try to maintain social distancing on the H and I dock, like now. So I mean, whatever the Board does, I'm voting against, I'm voting against Cranberry Cove. I'm voted to open the camp, that's fine with me, but not the Cove.
Okay, I, I just want to thank you for that, Wes. I, I do, I'm here, I know, A for effort, I keep coming back. But I'm only doing it because of the way that I tried to do it the first time. It just wasn't presented the way I wanted it to be presented, so I know that it, it seems like I keep coming back, but I felt that with the public reaction, I at least owed it as the chairperson of the commission to attempt my best attempt, and the last two were not my best attempts. I completely understand your, your feelings about it. As you know, I'm a teacher too. And I do special needs. I am going back into the classroom, I've been told. So I will be facing it every day as well. And I know that, I know that this is a tough call for anybody because we have to weigh the pros and cons. In the end, this lies with all of you, and you have to do what you feel is right. But I guarantee you that after today, I'm going away. I will not ever come back here to try to open it. You know, thank you, God. So I know that you're trying to do your best and keep everybody safe. I just felt that I had to give it my best shot. I do think we need to at least open the camp because we do have some scouts that really want to, want to use it, and their guidelines are even stricter than the state's, I believe. And that's a relationship that we would like to cultivate with the camp and scouting. So if we can at least get that on board. But again, this is all the call on you, so.
All right, Diane, sorry to cut you off. Mrs. Kement?
Yeah, and again, Diane, I thank you for persevering, and it does seem like Groundhog Day every selectmen's meeting that we see you, but thank you. And I thank Mr. Amato for working through these issues with you guys. And I, I, so I think there was a petition that somebody started out there, which I thought showed that there are a fair number of people who would like this to open up. And I understand what Mr. Bloss is saying, but I mean, we did approve that baseball and softball open up. And I don't know if you've driven by any of those fields, but there's a ton of kids there mixing and mingling. And we've got all, you know, Matt works for, you know, DPR, they've got all their stuff open, you know, DCR. Sorry, I just gave you a new job there, Matt. And, you know, so I think we're seeing, Mr. Amato was saying he's not concerned, given what's been laid out. And at some point, I, I hear what you're saying about the opening. I'm not fully convinced, even if we don't open the Cove and we have no issues, that kids are gonna be back in school in September, but that's a whole different discussion. But at some point, we have to say, the state of Massachusetts has allowed these areas to be opened. We have got a plan that's in place, that professionals have put in place, like Mr. Amato, working with Ms. Cohen. We've got protocols in place, and people need to decide, put their big boy and big girl pants on and decide what is best for them and their family, and hoping that they're going to socially distance and follow all of the protocols that are put in place. You know, I tend to not be an early adopter of anything, and I err on the side of caution on things. But I'm convinced, given the rigor of what Diane has put together, that this is a good, solid plan. And, you know, you've taken into consideration all of the PPE that you need, you're gonna have the staff that you need. I think all of the objections, other than just the fact that it's opening, that we've brought up, have been addressed in this revised plan.
Okay, so we're gonna move to the vote. So I'm gonna have two different motions. We're gonna separate Camp Quaney with Cranberry Cove. So I'm looking for a motion to So I'm looking for a motion to open up Cranberry Cove.
So moved by Matt?
Second.
Okay, the motion's been moved and seconded, roll call vote. Mr. Hickey.
You're muted, dude.
Yep, sorry. I didn't want to make sure that, you know, there were no noises coming out of mine. I'm going to vote no. Okay, Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Kement.
Aye, and I do want to add, it's important, the Boy Scout thing is contingent upon the Cove opening, because that's part of their plan, but aye.
Okay, Mr. Bloss.
No.
Okay, so this is a very difficult decision. If it's based on the financials, then my answer is no. I think that everyone brings up good points. I'm going to go with my gut on this one, I'm not saying my gut is always right, but I think Diane has certainly proved to me, especially over the past two weeks, that this can be done. I'm happy with the health agents' input as well. And I'm going to vote yes to open the Cove. So it looks like we have a vote of three to two to open the Cove. So I, I just want to thank everybody for their input, because everyone, I've been kicking this thing around for a month, you know, so just I hope everything works out. Yes, Diane, go ahead.
I just want to say, I didn't know if it had to be in the motion, but contingent upon the testing of the water and being able to properly staff.
Yes, Gria, can we put that in there, please? That is a good point, thank you. Okay, now I'm looking for a motion to open up Camp Kwani.
Excuse me, when are we going to be testing the water?
Mr. Amato?
Be five days before the opening day.
Okay, what?
Okay, so we're going to open, so how quickly, I guess, can you test the water, Mr. Amato? Because we're going to be opening moving forward.
Like forty-eight hours.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm looking for a motion to open Camp Kwani.
All moved.
Second by Matt.
The motion's made and seconded, Mr. Dyer, roll call vote.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Mrs. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. All right, Diane, good work.
Be careful what you ask for, all right, so.
Good luck with everything, okay?
Thanks.
And what about the movie night?
Mr. Amato, he's an asset, so you work with him, okay?
Yeah, no, absolutely, yes, he is, thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mitchell, didn't they have the movie night? And then was, did you need a vote for us to allow the Boy Scout camp to go up there? Or have you guys taken a vote on that yet, Diane?
Well, yeah, we've, we've had to wait until we got approval, it's pending approval of opening the Cove and the camp. And since we got that now, yes, they will be coming. But movie night, we need approval because we would like to use the MaKwan School. And I want to clarify the event a little more for this board. So I don't know where that is on the agenda, if that's it right now.
Go ahead.
Okay, so in conjunction with the Whitman Rockland Rotary Club, they will be sponsoring an event for the benefit of Camp Kwani, and we are doing it that way simply because the red tape involved in sponsoring our own event and getting other people to pay for some of our, to help us out with the costs of the event. So we want to show a movie, a drive-in movie, similar to what they're doing in Marshfield at the fairgrounds. We would like to show it at the MaKwan School using a rented outdoor inflatable movie screen. And to sell pizza and pre-packaged snacks and such, water and things like that. So we just need the board's approval to use the MaKwan School because it is a town building.
Diane, did your, did the commission vote on it?
Yes, we did vote on it.
You did vote on it?
Yes.
Then what was that vote?
It was to do it.
It was a vote to do it?
Yes.
Okay, and what's the date?
Melissa, was it August, what did we decide on, Melissa? I think it was August.
August fifth, August fifth was a rain date of August twelfth.
Okay, does the board have any questions about movie night at MaKwan School?
I, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Diane, you might want to check with the folks up at the high school, because they, they have a large movie screen that you might be able to get loaned to you, so that it reduces your out-of-pocket expenses and you can actually net more money for the camp.
We'll look into that, thank you, Laura, I didn't know that. Wow.
Hey, so I'm looking for a motion to approve movie night at the MaKwan School for the rec commission. And what was the date again, August fourth?
Fifth.
August fifth.
With a rain date of the twelfth.
With a rain date of the twelfth.
All moved.
Second by Matt.
Motion's moved and seconded, roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Mrs. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
Okay, and Mitchell, aye.
Great.
Okay, thanks again, Diane, good luck.
Thanks very much, have a good night.
Thanks.
All right, so annual and special town meeting warrants, FINCOM's meeting as we speak. So we're going to wait for their recommendations and we'll vote on their recommendations on next Tuesday, on the twenty-first. We just, we don't have them, so we, we did, we placed and we recommended what we could. But obviously, there's a lot of things that are factoring on FINCOM, so.
Are we able to wait, are we like legally permitted to wait that long? Or even just time-wise for printing and all that stuff, or are we okay with that?
There's, there's been town meetings where we literally recommended something five minutes before town meeting.
I do remember that, but I just didn't know if it was best practice, you know, for.
Best practice, but, you know, I, I do agree with what you had said last week and waiting and looking for their recommendations and you know, just for the time, because town meeting was so late, and then we moved it and shifted it, we, you know, we got a little screwed up, so. Normally, we're not this late. John, did you have anything to add to town meeting warrants?
I just, in your packet, I had, last week, the board asked me to get some information for, on the fourteen thousand dollars on the, on the, on the school, the regional school districts capital plan, as Article twelve. It was fourteen thousand dollars for guidance and special education counseling area configuration. And Dr. Christopher Jones and Ernie Sandlin from the school got back to me and gave an explanation. Just wanted to make sure everyone got that, I can read it if they didn't know or whatever, but if you got it, then that's the explanation of what they're doing with that.
Okay, yep, I got it. All right, and approve June donations, Gria, do we have June donations, Gria?
We do, I believe they're in your packet.
They, they probably are, let's see.
Yeah.
No, I got. Do you want me to read them, is that, or I can read them?
That would be.
Okay, there's only, there's two of them in June.
John, you're muted.
All right, let's try again, there's two of them in June, it's Patricia Catino for fifty dollars, Elder Affairs gift, and David Mansfield, one hundred dollars, Elder Affairs gift, for a total of a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, thank you, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the donations for June twenty twenty.
With gratitude.
Yes.
He, he moved it much nicer than I did, so take Matt's move, move, and I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been moved and seconded, roll call vote, Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Mrs. Kement. Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Okay, let's see, what else do we have on here? Okay, approve the May nineteenth, twenty twenty meeting minutes. Mr. Bloss, did you get a chance to review those minutes?
I did, all good.
Okay, excellent, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the May nineteenth, twenty twenty meeting minutes.
So moved by Matt.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, roll call vote, Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Mrs. Kement. For some reason, Laura, we can't hear you, I seen your lips move, but I couldn't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, now I can hear you, yep.
Okay, aye, sorry about that.
Thanks, Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. And we've come to the Town Administrative Report, Mr. Stambrook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I have signed the following warrants since the last meeting. A warrant fifty-four dated June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, for two hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and twelve cents. That was a vendor warrant, and that was, the, the big one on that warrant was a hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars or so. And that was for engineers for the highway building, we hadn't paid them for work since COVID began, and they've been working on plans for that. So that was the most of what was on that warrant. Another warrant dated June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, warrant fifty-four PR for seventy-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-three cents. And that was a vendor warrant. A warrant, a warrant dated July ninth, two thousand twenty, warrant two PR for ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. And that's a payroll warrant. A warrant dated July ninth, two thousand twenty, warrant number two for four hundred and thirty-six thousand, ninety-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. That's a vendor warrant. Four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars of that warrant is fiscal year twenty-one, school district debt related. We had to pay that off on July fifteenth or before July fifteenth. And finally, the final warrant is dated July ninth, two thousand twenty, warrant two WH for thirty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-two cents. And that's a payroll withholding warrant. Under old business, last week, the board had asked me about a chapter ninety money and how much money was allocated to the town. And for fiscal year twenty-one is three hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. It's the same dollar amount as fiscal year twenty, and that was based on a two-hundred-million-dollar Commonwealth wide bond bill. And thank you to Representative Josh Cutler for giving that number to me as, as quickly as he did, that was very helpful. The first CARES Act reimbursement from the town to the county went out last week. The total requested and request number one is thirty-four thousand, five sixty-five, forty-one. And these were mostly direct COVID-nineteen purchases related to personal protection equipment. If there aren't any problems, we should be receiving that money on July twenty-fourth. Of course, there's much more reimbursements, requests that will be forthcoming, but that's the first one. There's also a large request coming soon from the school for their costs related to COVID-nineteen compliance or changing things around, cleaning, things like that. And finally, on town hill, town, town hall reopening, we've been delayed as we can't find a satisfactory cleaning company to come in and, and get a proper cleaning regimen going. I think we're on company number five now that we've contacted in the past week. They're coming in tomorrow, according to Gria. We're still seeking companies, that's where we're, we're kind of hung up, so as soon as town, as soon as we can get a good cleaning going here, someone that will actually show and do, do the job properly, we'll open up town hall, is what we've been speaking of before, it'll reopen by appointment only from eight to five on Monday through Thursday, I think, I think, sorry, eight to four, not eight, eight to five, eight to four, Monday through Thursday by appointment only. And that was it, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, can I just? I did, well, it's kind of a question slash comment. There seems to not be a lot of clarity out there about when our town meeting is being held. So I'm hoping maybe we can work with the town moderator to pump up the volume on letting people know the, what, where, and how of the town meeting. Because there's a fair amount of anxiety about it, we've got some important issues out there, and I really haven't seen that much that's public-facing about it. So I'm kind of hoping that maybe, you know, we could work with Sean and get that information out there via the express and our new and exciting Facebook page and the website and all that other good stuff.
And you could also talk to Chief Mix about getting it on the board. The digital board.
Yeah. And one other thing, at last meeting, we had talked about canceling our August fourth meeting. And while I do live in eternal hope that I don't have to meet with you lovely gentlemen every Tuesday evening, there is a possibility, if our budget does not pass at our town meeting, we may need to meet on August fourth to set a new town meeting date. I know Whitman has, is planning on meeting that next Tuesday for that purpose. So if, for instance, the school budget doesn't pass, then we're going to have to talk about this timing, like thirty days, forty-five days. You know, we've got to get back to the school committee within a certain time, then they have to get back to us within a certain time. And I just would caution that if we wait to meet until August eleventh, that window of time is not going to be particularly advantageous. It's tight as it is, even with the schools voting to reopen after Labor Day, but we will have done ourselves and the folks in Hanson no favor by not meeting on the fourth. So I just ask that we reconsider.
I can, I can answer that question, I'm not going to be available on the fourth, I'm going to be on vacation, I'm literally leaving after town meeting. So I think that if it does fail, the, the school committee has thirty days. I think that we'll have adequate enough time to be able to set the town meeting if we have to, but I'm not available on the fourth. So I, I don't want to have a meeting on the fourth.
Okay. Jen's not into you dialing in while you're on vacation, I'm just kidding.
I did, I did that from Florida before. But if there's no more questions for John, then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved by Matt.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, roll call vote, Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Mrs. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye, be safe, thanks, guys, and we'll see you next week. Thanks, John, thanks, Gria.
Night.
Thanks, Mr. Amato, have a good night, guys.